If we would have been in person today, we would have been at IU Northwest. So we're still going to hear from some folks at IU Northwest to share with us what's going on. I'm going to pass it over to John Applegate and he's going to kick us off. But thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Connor, and good afternoon, everybody, again. Normally, I don't introduce the chancellors because, of course, you already know them very well. But this is sort of an exceptional circumstance. And Chancellor Ken Owama of IU Northwest joined IU in the midst of a pandemic. So I believe that you really only had a chance to meet him once, and that was virtual and that was fairly brief.
That is correct.
And in fact, I've only met him once in person, and that was during the interview process. But since then, of course, we've gotten to be great friends over Zoom and phone. So he's really settled in wonderfully to the campus. I think you all recall that he came to us from the College of Staten Island, which is part of the City University of New York, where he was the founding vice president for the Division of Economic Development, let me get this right, Continuing Studies and Government Relations. So it was really a perfect fit for IU Northwest when he was appointed. And so it has proved. He has been tireless in his engagement with the campus. From where I sit, he seems to always have been there. And very, very active in the larger community, which, of course, for the IU Northwest campus is just particularly important. So we're just delighted to have Ken with us at IU. And he's become just an indispensable part of the team. So without any more, I'm going to turn it over to him to give his presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John, and President McRobbie, your respective teams. And also a shout out thanks to my regional chancellor colleagues who may be joining me today as well, too. Of course, I want to thank Trustee Connor and all the trustees and the Student Relations Committee for inviting me here today to tell you about the story, however briefly, of IU Northwest during these incredibly challenging times. And I look forward to the time soon, as John said, when I could meet everyone in person. Well overdue, but it's coming soon, I hope, hopefully. So maybe if I can just start right away, without further delay, right into my slide presentation. This is a pre-pandemic picture of some of our great student leaders giving a glimpse of our anticipated return to normalcy in fall 2021. Like their shirts say, they do love IU Northwest, I can attest to that. And after my presentation, you will be meeting one of our great student government president, Anghad Sidhu, who is sitting in the middle of this picture. I am so very optimistic for the future because of you. Your support was critical upon my arrival on August 1st, in the midst of the pandemic, as John had said, and just prior to the start of the fall semester. So I thought I would start my presentation today by actually sharing with you how we did. So if we can go to the next screen. So this is somewhat of a spoiler alert. The image on the right is a "We Are in This Together" pin that we created for our virtual chancellor's medallion event in November. We gave these pins to all of our faculty, staff, student leaders, and affiliated members of our community as part of this event. It commemorated their efforts and our success on behalf of our students during the preceding spring and summer and our return this fall. Success that was born of outstanding performance, innovative contributions, and exceptional, if not unprecedented, collaboration and teamwork at IU Northwest. With Indiana University's incredible, and I know that word incredible can be overused and perceived as somewhat hyperbolic, but it is appropriate, definitely appropriate word to use here. With IU's incredible medical, technical, and organizational support, we have been able to maintain a safe and healthy campus from day one to today, even as our surrounding counties have unfortunately experienced significantly higher levels of COVID impact. So if we can move to the next slide. Our comprehensive implementation plans, along with exhaustive communications and messaging emanating from our leadership team and our campus restart committee, resulted in a collective responsibility in complying with mask, social distancing, and testing requirements. And by all measures, we successfully provided in-person classes and other in-person experiences throughout this academic year. These are photos of our mitigation testing facility that we opened on our campus. And we are most proud of the fact that our nursing students, under guidance of our faculty, ran our facility, providing our students with professional clinical experiences, while also advancing our health and safety priorities and protocols at IU Northwest. Next slide, please. And so in late fall, we conducted a student check-in survey to see how our students were faring during this extremely challenging time for them. In replying to this prompt as part of that survey, it is remarkable that close to 100% of responding students either agreed or strongly agreed that IU Northwest met their expectations in providing a healthy and safe campus environment. Next slide, please. The other story about IU Northwest, if you could go back one. If the other story about IU Northwest during this time was the delivery of our academic programming. And despite all of the inevitable disruption and pivoting of learning modalities experienced by our students in spring, summer, and fall, still, close to 80% of responding students agreed or strongly agreed that IU Northwest met their expectations in providing academic experiences. This is certainly reflective of the close mentoring relationship that our faculty have with our students, which we are known for, but is also indicative of the fact that IU Northwest has been a recent leader in online educational excellence, supported by our Center for Innovation and Scholarship and Teaching, or SISTL for short. So we were able to adapt very quickly. And maybe the next slide, you've got a little preview of this next slide already. And the process of adaptation and innovation continues at IU Northwest. SISTL, with the support of IU Online, recently opened our new academic media production space. The space will provide faculty with access to the latest technologies and video presentation tools that will support even more creativity with curriculum to boost student engagement, both online and in person. But to get a real sense of our students' experience this past year, I thought you would like to hear from the students themselves about what that phrase "we are in this together" really means to them. So if we could go to the next slide video, I would appreciate it.
College is a time for learning, exploring, and growing. It's when you get to shape the person you want to be and the life you want to live. And at Indiana University Northwest, it's a journey you won't take alone. Our award-winning faculty, caring staff, and encouraging support teams are here for you every step of the way. We care about your future, we care about your success, and it shows. This year, many of our students have persevered in the face of the pandemic and have done their best to thrive in their own way.
I didn't really know what to expect when I transitioned from high school to college, especially in the middle of COVID-19. In high school, my online classes were very different than they are here. The technology here is better, the classes are more engaging, and I'm learning so much more. Some of my classes are online and some of my classes are in person. It all just depends on your course of study. My professors have been very supportive and understanding, and they work really hard to make sure that I'm doing well in school and in life.
Many of the hands-on learning opportunities students enjoy are still available. They just look a little differently.
One of the cool things about being a student here is the strong interaction between faculty and staff. We're a pretty small campus, so there are a lot of opportunities at IU Northwest you won't find anywhere else. For example, I'm conducting research alongside my biology professor. We're studying antibiotic-resistant bacteria and ways to stay one step ahead of superbugs. The pandemic hasn't slowed down our research. We've been taking extra safety precautions, like wearing masks and sanitizing the lab very thoroughly.
Efforts like these, as well as an ambitious testing program, have led to low rates of COVID-19 on campus. IU researchers recently found that infection risk was not higher among students attending more in-person courses, making IU Northwest one of the safest campuses in the state.
The fact that everyone works so hard on campus to keep us safe means a lot to me. It shows me that people care, and it feels good to know that my professors and friends have my back. When I doubt myself, I think about all the love and support and remember why I am in school in the first place. To help me achieve my dream, it encourages me to keep going.
At IU Northwest, we want students to succeed because we know that the payoff is tremendous. College degree holders earn more money and have more job stability, with the recent studies showing that the average bachelor's degree holder from IU Northwest sees an increase of more than $20,000 in earnings each year, compared to someone with a high school diploma working in Indiana.
But perhaps more importantly, the adversity we are all facing now is leading to new ways of doing things and teaching us to overcome any obstacles in our way. The silver lining is that these reimagined experiences are preparing students to enter a world where innovation and resilience is needed more than ever.
If you're wondering if you can still have fun in college while dealing with a pandemic, the answer is definitely yes. With 70 student-led clubs on our campus, our student volunteer leaders have been working around the clock to make sure we stay connected to each other. We've hosted drive-in movie nights, food drives, and giveaways, philanthropy week, Zoom games, sporting events, and so much more. We're all in this together, so why not have some fun together?
Yeah, it's been great. If you're thinking about putting off college, don't.
I've really pushed myself this semester, and I am so glad I did, because it's worth it.
To learn more about how you too can thrive at IU Northwest, visit iun.edu today.
So thank you for watching that with me yet again. I could watch it 100 times. If you go to the next slide, please. I'll let them adjust over here while we're waiting. Okay, so I think our emphasis at IU Northwest on student success really emanates from that video. IU Northwest was recently selected to be part of a Higher Learning Edge Commission's Student Success Academy, an initiative which is aimed at evaluating and improving institutional factors that affect student success. And this is a graphical representation of an environmental scan created by our team of faculty and staff working on this initiative. And starting with the data, drawing a comprehensive and accurate picture of who our students are. Next slide, please. And this provided us with opportunities appearing on the left side of this diagram to identify groups who may need more support to reach their educational goals. To then design and implement approaches, which is set forth on the right side of the diagram, to improve student success at IU Northwest. And some of these approaches are, you know, greater communication, information, and planning leading to earlier declaration of majors, block scheduling with linked classes, meeting back-to-back, first-year seminars providing a component about making the transition to college, and embedding modern evidence-based pedagogical techniques into a broad range of classes to address opportunity gaps. Next slide, please. So this commitment to student success is reflected in our 2019 retention rates, attaining approximately 88% retention into the second term and over 70% retention into the second year for baccalaureate-seeking full-time beginners. Next slide. And these retention outcomes contributed to our relatively stable enrollment, despite this being the COVID year, experiencing only slight decreases in fall 2020 and spring 2021. And this is leading into our summer enrollment, which is, as of yesterday, experienced an increase of 11.6% in students and 22.1% in credit hours compared to this point in cycle last year. Our next big challenge will be fall 2021 enrollment, as we are currently experiencing delays in applications, especially those from traditionally underserved students as a consequence of remote in-person pivoting that has greatly disrupted our local high schools. As the most diverse campus within Indiana University, we are concerned that this development is having a disproportionate impact upon us. So this is how we are responding, and if we could move to the next slide. IU Northwest recently established its first strategic enrollment team with over 30 faculty and staff representing all campus operational areas, working in six subgroups to address some of the major areas impacting enrollment, including our existing student success initiatives, addressing opportunity gaps, student ability to pay, advising supports, collaborating with external partners. And a big part of that collaboration we are already undertaking is, I would describe as intense re-engagement with our high schools, high school pipelines to collaboratively address the lower number of college applications. So that's a critical point for us. Regional perception and student career awareness and marketing and communication. So these are the focuses of our strategic enrollment team as of right now to move the dial for fall and beyond. Next slide, please. Of course, the strength of our academic programs continues to serve as our foundation, with over 70 majors participating in 42 collaborative online degree programs, with more on the horizon and with several new graduate programs in the process of development in our School of the Arts, School of Business and Economics, and School for Public Environmental Affairs, School of Nursing, College of Health and Human Services, and School of Education has a new program, which I'll be featuring later in this presentation as well, too. So based upon an analysis of our enrollment yield as compared to our base of available high school graduates, there is room and opportunity for IU Northwest to grow. Next slide, please. And one of the keys for growth for us lies in the concept of rediscovery. That's the term I use in rediscovery for our communities in Northwest Indiana to look at us anew, to see us for what we are, which is the region's anchor institution. And we intend to do this by being very deliberate and leveraging our energy from our academic programs taught by our accomplished faculty, our uniquely intensive faculty and student mentoring relationship arising from our learner focus, our student diversity, which I'll talk about a little bit more in this presentation, our regional economic impact is daylighted in the recent report commissioned by Indiana University, our student return on investment, high outcomes, low tuition, and our disciplinary expertise, faculty and student community engaged academic and cultural talents. And so the idea is to unleash all of this energy, all of this incredible energy, to our audience of K through 12 institutions, which I've already talked a little bit about, businesses, government relations, foundations, and not-for-profits, community-based organizations, and our alumni. It is the process I described of connecting our energy with our communities to create sustainable collaborations and partnerships where the whole becomes greater than the sum of its parts, and with all boats rising. And we are already on our way. Just one example of this is our recent partnership with the City of Gary Community Schools Corporation. And if I could go to the next slide, please. So this is a news video produced by the Northwest Indiana Times outlet, news outlet, about the initiative. And if you don't mind, I'm going to summarize and talk over the video as it plays. Like so many school systems, Gary is experiencing a teacher shortage with a large number of their teachers currently working under emergency permits. So our School of Education worked with the Gary School Manager to create a cohort program to help teachers earn licensure and master's degree in two years or less, with participating teachers pledging to stay with the Gary Schools for three years, ensuring greater and much-needed continuity. This initiative is now being expanded to other schools across Northwest Indiana, increasing our graduate enrollment while also meeting a critical community need. And if you could go to the next slide. Just another example, I think, of this energy connecting to community. Just yesterday, we hosted FEMA and State Health Commissioner Dr. Christina Box for a discussion with our local government and health officials about equity and access to vaccinations by underserved communities in our region. Both Elizabeth Ryan, Associate Dean of our Medical School, and I, along with some of our medical students, discussed our collaborative role in further helping our communities with this effort. These are the types of high outcome collaborations that we will continue to build at IU Northwest. If you could move to the next slide. And we can't speak about energy or strength without talking about our diversity. One of our greatest strengths continues to be our diversity. As you can see, highlighted for 2020, approximately 50% of our students coming from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds, we're very proud of that. We recently became a Hispanic-serving institution, the only public comprehensive institution of higher education in Indiana with this designation. And this designation will provide new opportunities for funding and other resources to help us better serve all our students in alignment with our student success priority. Next slide, please. So all of this momentum is being captured also in a new marketing campaign, which our IU Northwest team is launching in collaboration with IU Studios. This is just one example of a new creative, which really, I think, conveys the excitement of rediscovery. This one focuses on becoming your best you, and our creatives will start focusing more on student interest and career aspirations so our prospective students can see themselves in these images. Next slide, please. So as I conclude my brief presentation, I would like to highlight our leadership team at IU Northwest. You may know some of them already. Our cabinet members, along with our faculty and student leaders, they represent the great students, faculty, and staff who are coming together to chart our future at IU Northwest. I have been only chancellor for eight months, but I hope you sense from my presentation that I already know what a special place IU Northwest is. And we can then go to our last slide. So I have our Red Hawks saying thank you to everyone. So thank you again for allowing me to present to you here today. And again, I look forward to meet everyone in person very soon. So thank you for your time and your audience today.
Thank you, Chancellor. At this point, I think you mentioned him, but we'll have Anghad Sidhu present to us. He's the student body president at IU Northwest and was featured several times during Chancellor Owama's remarks and presentations. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
President McRobbie, Board of Trustees, good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today. Just as Trustee Connor mentioned, my name is Anghad Sidhu, and I am proud to serve as a student government president for IU Northwest. I'm currently a senior completing a major in biology and minor in chemistry. After graduation, I will be applying to medical school this summer to pursue a future career in medicine. Today, I will be presenting on the student experience at IU Northwest during the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide, please. We will begin by understanding the challenges faced by IU Northwest students, followed by our various engagement initiatives during this academic year, and ending with our hope for the future. Next slide, please. To begin to talk about the student experience, it is important to highlight our campus and the obstacles students faced this past year. Next slide, please. As you may know, IU Northwest is a non-residential campus, meaning that all of the students live off-campus either with their parents, by themselves, or with their own families. This traditionally has been one of the primary drivers behind difficulties we've experienced with student engagement, with the campus being viewed by students as only for classes. Coupling this existing disconnect with the COVID-19 pandemic, many of our students felt isolated, alone, and lost. Along with the anxieties and stressors behind continuing school during the pandemic, students also faced many challenges, like lack of childcare, taking care of sick family members, and in some cases, with parents losing jobs, making some of our students the primary breadwinners for their families. The efforts by Indiana University, such as with the distribution of emergency funds, was immensely helpful for several of our students and set a path for a new connection between these groups. Next slide, please. Starting in the summer, our goal was to address student concerns and to cultivate campus life within IU's safety guidelines once again. The work was cut out for us, but this is how we were successful. Next slide, please. To address the many questions the students had, we held various virtual town halls during the summer and fall semesters. This allowed students to directly talk with and ask the administrators questions regarding the return to campus in the fall, COVID-19-related questions, and an opportunity to share their own personal struggles. To gather and address specific questions, we implemented virtual surveys sent to all students across campus. This allowed us to target our approach and improve major areas of concern for the students. Next slide, please. One of the most common reports from our surveys was the impact on students' mental health due to the pandemic. In discussions with other student governments, this theme was shared amongst all IU campuses across the state. To address this situation on our campus, we implemented a two-pronged approach, utilizing both social media and email, along with in-person events. We first worked with administration by making sure all IU Northwest students were aware of the various student support and counseling services on campus via email. Next slide, please. Going into our social media presence, our members used flyers and short videos to share mental health tips and some of their own advice on what they have been doing during these times to stay active and healthy. Following in theme, we published a short yoga series through the winter session to continue to engage our students through mindfulness and meditation. During this time, we also held small events and giveaways, such as the most recent live painting event, where students were able to follow an instructor and paint in a socially-distanced space. Next slide, please. Along with mental health, another primary concern for students was surrounding accessibility and affordability for school during this time. Programs on campus, such as the book laptop loan, free tutoring services, classroom aid, the hotspot lot, and the free clothing closet were all highlighted and used to assist our students. We're also aware of heightened food insecurities faced by Indiana University students at this time, so we held a Thanksgiving food drive to restart our on-campus food bank, the Red Hawks Nest. This food bank is currently fully operational, allowing students to place orders via phone or online, and then picking up their packages in a discreet manner. Next slide, please. Another major effect of the pandemic was with the shutdown of various academic extracurriculars, primarily the research labs on our campus. Last March, all labs were in a frenzy to pause their projects in their tracks, with no official date to resume. The subsequent months saw research being completely halted in all labs, with only essential personnel checking in periodically. In my own experience of performing microbiology research, our return of the fall saw low numbers of students working in the lab to limit crowding. Additional focus was also placed on virtual research via data analysis and literature review. Although we were able to pick things back up where we left them, we were in no way able to perform at the same efficiency as before. This semester, things have been different. As mentioned in the video shown by Chancellor Owama, the introduction of vaccines and coordination with other labs have helped to pick research back up to a somewhat normal pace while continuing to practice public health policies. Next slide, please. Circling back to the original disconnect between students and campus life, we made sure to continue to host fun and diverse events that highlighted campus in a new light as a getaway from home. The campus hosted several free grab-and-go lunch celebrations and gave out free IU Northwest branded items to all who attended. A memorable event was a Halloween-themed drive-in opened to all students and their families, where we showed a movie on a large inflatable screen. Students stayed in their cars, which made for a fun, yet socially-distanced experience. Next slide, please. Just as it was important to celebrate student life, we also believe in the continued commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion for our students. To address this topic in light of the past year and with current events, we are currently implementing a diversity training program for all student leaders to address implicit biases and the understanding of diverse backgrounds. We are also implementing a student survey on our campus to gather information on student experiences regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion to determine a baseline. From there, we will be able to better tailor initiatives to address and commemorate diversity amongst our students in order to help them feel more welcome on campus. Next slide, please. Now on to our future work. Next slide, please. We are currently in the process of electing new student leaders to our student government. In the meantime, we are working with IUN leaders and will continue to work in this transition period to create a shared student activity space on our campus for continued engagement. We are also excited to be assisting with the planning and implementation of guidelines set for the return to campus for the fall 2021 semester. In closing, I want to highlight the hard work from our students, staff, faculty, and administration for making this current year possible. Faced with the biggest public health crisis of our time, we all show the power of what we can get done when we work together. I want to continue to encourage the university to expand upon continued mental health resources for our students and diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives that celebrate our uniqueness as a and diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives that celebrate our uniqueness as a student body. Next slide, please. Thank you for your time.